Good, how about you?
Public meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you're right, there's a public meeting, so, public meeting, I'm sorry. We dispense, we dispense with some of the administration on the public meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, would you please stand and join Councilman Rob, who pledged our, slung our flag in country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing for our prayer, please.
God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life, thank you for our city council and city leaders and the opportunity you have given them to serve the people of our city. Help them as our leaders and us as citizens to act with the character and conviction that you call of us. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill, help us to speak with wisdom and kindness, give us all a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority, guide us to be people you need to lead Guthrie to be a city that honors you. Help us to see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us and to treat everyone with the reverence your creation deserves. And finally, God, renew us with the strength of your presence and joy in helping to build a community worthy of each resident and those who will visit this town. We ask this with confidence in your goodness and love. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Frank, great words as always. Call to order our Guthrie City Council meeting of March 18th. Second item on the agenda is public comments, community announcements or recognitions, do we have any? We have none. Third item on the agenda is consent agenda, there is some changes in the consent agenda, but the preliminary is consent agenda items A through P, we are, we are removing items G through M, there's new information that'll be presented at the next meeting, updated information, so those are being removed, G through M are being removed from the consent agenda. The...
Can I make a motion to approve as they are, as it is?
You can.
I just did.
It would save me some voice time.
Motion to approve.
Second. With the, with the change as identified.
With the change as it is.
You accept that?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as, as changed, removing items G through M. Any other discussion? Submit your votes, votes please.
All votes ready?
See the votes. Unanimous from all those present to approve consent agenda items A through F and N through P. Item number four, items removed from the consent agenda, there were none, other than the four that are the, the ones that I previously identified. Item number five, public hearing, have a motion to move into public hearing to identify dilapidated structures in resolution number two zero two three, two five dash zero two.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Submit your votes. See the votes, unanimous then to move into public, into public hearing. Dan, item number five is the public hearing concerning these dilapidated structures, think you have about 10 or so that you want to present?
Yes, thank you Mayor, City Council, I was gonna go over a couple things and yeah, first, this is our annual dilapidated structures program, we have tend to present tonight, has, just like it has been the case in previous years, if, you know, today is not the final day, not the end of the line, if there's any of the property owners who truly want to try to save their home and work towards getting it up to code, there is still that ability, if any of them are here, they can always talk to us afterwards. This year, we have had a number of property owners reach out to us and be, been in contact with us, when Noah goes over the presentation, he'll basically highlight the ones that we have been in contact with, so we might be in a position where a lot of these will get fixed up over time. I'll just end with, the last few years, we've normally gone, started the public hearing with doing at the house and if the owner was here, giving them a chance to ask questions and then go house by house, so if the council would like to continue to do that, we'll do so, or we can wait till the very end, it's up to the council.
Let's follow that same process, please.
Okay, so at this point, I'll turn it over to Noah and he'll go over each property and then obviously if the council has any questions of myself or Noah, we'll be available. Thank you.
All right, Noah, it's all yours.
Good evening.
Evening.
We have a list of 10 houses for our dilapidated structures presentation this year, we'll get right to it, we, we have heard from a vast majority of the property owners this year and I think, I see quite a few of them here today. So first one on our list this evening is 112 West Logan, it has not had electricity or water service since 2022 and no gas service since 2014. Since 2011, we've had 22 code enforcement cases open, from vagrancy to tall grass and weeds, accumulation of limbs, accumulation of material and trash. Is there anyone that'd like to speak for this house tonight?
Can you move on?
Okay. Next one on our list is right around the corner, right here, it's 123 West Springer. We have been in touch with the property owners of this one and I apologize, the previous home, we have not heard anything on the, from the property owners in what their intent is for the house, but on this one, we have, we have not really determined a direction that they want to go, but they have reached out. This house has recently had water service, but prior to its recent service, it had, it had been off for an extended period of time, several years. The electricity is active in the home, but the gas has been off since 2022. There have been 22 code enforcement cases at this property since 2012. Is there anyone that'd like to speak tonight?
Yes, sir.
Would you come to the microphone?
Absolutely.
Identify yourself, please.
My name is Cynthia Hedge and I'm one of the siblings of James Cherry, I'm not sibling, excuse me, one of his children, and it is the four of us and we are in the process of getting everyone together to make a decision what we would like to do with this property. We're not ready to just let it be. After daddy passed, there's been some family that's lived there, some things that's happened back and forth, and we tried to take care of everything that's been addressed through the city, taxes have been paid, and so we're in the process of trying to keep it painted, grass cut, things like that, but again, we're in the process of reaching out to the rest of the siblings, his children, to determine a final, what we want to do with it, and if we request, what we would like to do is just request additional time, maybe a month or so, so we can get everybody lined up and make a formal decision and get things rolling with that.
Well, I think we have that much time, at least, at a minimum.
Okay, that sounds good, thank you.
Yes. Yeah, please, please have that active communication with that office, if you would, that's the key to having a resolution before, before we have to take final action. Okay? Noah, go ahead.
Okay. Okay, next is also right down the street here, 423 South Second. I have been in contact with the property owner, he has plans to do the demolition himself or to hire a contractor, rather, to do the demolition, we don't have a timeline discussed yet, but he has expressed to me that that's his intent. The building is old enough that any utilities that it would have had predate any records that any of the utility companies have, so it's been in this condition for quite a while. Is there anyone here to speak for this house tonight? Okay, moving on, our next house is 515 East Harrison, and I'll go ahead and say that the, this house and the next house on the list are next door to each other, same property owner, and we have been in communication, they've expressed, expressed interest in having the remodel process done, it was begun at both of these properties years ago and then funding ran out, it changed hands, this and that, but this house currently has active electrical, but the gas and water have been off since 2019. Since 2015, there's been nine code cases there, but for the most part, they keep the property cleaned up, it was some vagrancy issues several years back, but I don't think the property owners here, is anyone here to speak for this house tonight?
Okay.
And again, right next door to it is this house, 517 East Harrison, same property owner, same situation. It has not had electricity since, as far back as OGNES records go back, and I'm not sure exactly how far that is. No water since 2011, but the gas is active there, there have been only seven code cases since 2012, so, and again, I don't believe the property owners here on this house either, but would anyone like to speak for it? Okay, we'll move along. Next on our list is 624 East Perkins, I have been in contact with this property owner as well as a couple different contractors that he has been in talks with, that he would like to hire to do some of the work, we're at the process right now where he needs to provide us the scope of work, the contractors that he's looking to hire, what the overall rough cost would be, and then a timeline for the work performed, and we're happy to move forward with him on it, we believe this house is definitely salvageable, so, is the property owner here this evening?
Yes, I want to salvage that property.
Please identify yourself, sir.
Duncan Tyson.
Thank you.
And I talked to a contractor, my plumber there, so I'm here, man, but my other guy made it the one gonna do my work on it, and so for this part out, what I need to do now, get back with.
Okay. Again, that's the key element, is the communication link to that office, and how long have you owned the property?
I guess about six or seven years.
Okay.
Yeah.
But, but haven't done anything?
Yes, I done put most of the new windows in, I got all of my siding out, I got a few windows that I got to, I already got the windows I got to cut it in and put my windows in and finish my porch, you know, on the, I got the bottom port done and...
So you have been doing some work, and then have you already hired somebody to continue, or are you about to?
Yes, he was supposed to be here.
Okay, you have hired somebody?
Yes.
Okay, he might be right there. All right, good, good, we're talking about you. Okay, all right, and you've been in, in communication with the office here?
Yes.
Concerning your plans as well, and as well as the remodel contractor?
Yes, we just got to put it all down and present it to them.
Okay. All right, all right. Do you have any sense of how long it will take to bring this structure back to living condition?
Okay, so, I'd like to clarify kind of the mode of this whole meeting here, once this goes, homes go on the dilapidated structure list, you have, as long as you're working with these gentlemen right here in City Hall?
Yeah.
And making improvements and not just sitting back and walking away from it, we're not gonna tear the house down, that's the last thing we want to do, we want nothing to do with that, okay? So as long as something, some progress is being made, you're gonna be kept whole in that property, because we, again, we don't want anything to do with tearing it down. It goes on this list so that it shows the seriousness of the city in making sure that, hey, these homes do get up to some kind of legitimate speed and livable or torn down or whatever you all decide to do, but what you want to do, as long as you're doing it, we're gonna let you do it.
Okay.
Any other questions of the owner? Okay, thank you so much.
All right.
Do you have anything else to add? All right. Noah, go ahead.
Okay. I will say too that Duncan has been very communicative with us and he understands that there is a process to the work being done, it can't all just simply be done and then say, hey, we did all the work, he understands the permitting process, the inspection process, and he's certainly working towards that, so we're happy to see, to see his progress there. All right, our next house is 705 East Springer, the electric hasn't had anything on record as far back as their records go, no gas and water since 2009. Since 2012, there have been 16 code cases at this property, is the property owner here to speak on behalf of this house?
Seeing none.
I, I will say real quick again on this house, I apologize, we have been in communication with the property owner and with another potential contractor, much like Tyrus, that does a lot of work here in town, so, similar situation, they're just trying to get all the other tradesmen in line and then we'll get them lined out with permits to, to start work.
All right, all right, very good, thank you.
Next one is 724 East Springer, it has not had gas since 2010, electric since 2024, and the water was on until recently, but before, the water was turned on earlier this year, been an extended amount of time since it had water service. Since 2012, we've had 12 code enforcement cases, is the property owner here to speak for this house tonight?
Yes.
Want to come forward? Identify yourself, please.
Hi, my name is Victoria Rodriguez. Hi. So the house is currently being worked on, as of March 12th, the electricity is back on in the house. We are currently working with the contractor to get the roof repaired, and then we will soon be in, I'm trying to get bids right now from plumbers to get the plumbing back in working order so we can get the water on, and we are gonna try to set a plan to get the house back in livable condition.
Okay, and you have been in communication with the office about your, your plan and how you're going about doing it?
They expressed, yeah, I believe it was your dad, early on that this was his intent, but I haven't, I haven't sat down and been discussed to that degree.
All right, all right, I don't want to sound like broke a record, but that is a key responsibility that you have, to have that communication with the office.
Okay.
Noah?
Okay, moving on. Next house is 1024 West Warner, the property owner has been in close contact with us, they actually received or hired a home inspector that did a full walk through the house from roof to foundation, crawl space, everything, and he delivered to us just a couple days ago, the full inspection reports, so we, we've been looking over that with him and then at that point, again, he's kind of at the point where he just needs to line out some of his bids with his contractors, but he has full intentions of remodeling, saving this home too, and it's right across the street from Banta Park, it'd be beautiful one to benefit that area right there if he could get it fixed up. Is the property owner here this evening?
I guess not.
Okay.
Move on.
Okay. The last home on our list this evening is 1723 West Logan, it has no electricity of record, the gas was last on in 2004 and the water was last on in 2020, since 2013, there have been 14 code cases at this property. I, I spoke with the property owner early, early on in this and then have not had any more communication with them, are they here this evening?
Would you like to speak? Please identify yourself.
My name is Jonathan Friend, so I recently got control over the house because of my mother's medical condition. That being said, it was a lot of discovery of what exactly the problems were, for instance, on the east side of the foundation, my brother, during his times on the, on the streets of Guthrie, decided to grant himself an access hole with a sledgehammer and crawl through a floor furnace.
Nice.
Yeah, and that's just one example of many, the house, the picture you saw there, that back door that's open, it had a chain that was securing it, and I don't know if it was the mortgage company or who it was, I was told the mortgage company was doing a lot of things, and I found out it was actually the city that was taking care of things like mowing and things like going through, and I had no idea, I just got handed a stack of bills not long ago. I lost my truck and unfortunately, because of the shape the house was in, I was not able to store supplies in there because of local elements and the door being open, I was losing a lot of things that I was trying to put in there to begin with, and so I've just honestly been trying to get to a position where I can start work on it. I do have three bids in, I don't have the formal bids, but I do have three separate bids in from contractors and a few different routes I could take with the house, but the second step, the first would have to be fixing that part in the foundation, the second would have to be doors, windows and siding, and that's a big chunk of change right out of the gate, so one of the avenues was with Long Hair Repair, he knew my grandfather and he was going to let me do it in stages, let me get the supplies and then help me out as far as labor and so on goes, and we were going to do it through that process, but I got really behind the eight ball between trying to take care of a mom, my kids, a house that's in a completely different city from where I live, I just, I couldn't keep up, to be completely honest. One of the gentlemen that I met with to do the bids, his name is Craig Kiriakas, and he's offered me a job, I, we haven't spoke details, this happened yesterday, even at the lowest possible income, on a timeline of six to seven months, I can at least get the house sealed up. That's, that's on the lowest possible income because the, the supplies are at a, from what I can, from what I can tell, a record high, it's gonna take me a little bit to, for siding, for windows and for doors, but after that, I can go room by room on project and I can be done within another six months with the house entirely.
Do you live local?
No, I live in Yukon at the moment.
Yukon. Is your plans to live here when you're done with it?
Yes, I've actually got, there's another lot behind there that I'm building a duplex on as well for my mother because her strokes have rendered her unable to do anything.
Okay, all right, any other questions in the council?
Again, you're gonna have to deal with them to go through this timeline, they're the kings of that deal.
Yeah, it, it was basically a situation where I got caught up in my own mess elsewhere and wasn't even thinking about it, because none of the, like the mowing bills from the city, I wasn't getting any correspondence from the city, my address was not on record, they didn't even have my phone number on record until I spoke to Noah, and it wasn't, and it wasn't until Craig called me that I even realized that that was a thing, and so I called Noah immediately, so we talked last year and then we talked just recently, but other than that, those were the two conversations, and no, for no reason other than just a massive pile on my plate.
So how did you find out?
Craig Kiriakas called me. He, he was anxious to get the property because he saw the potential there, he saw that the foundation was there, the roof was there, and it had the additional lot in the back, so he thought it was a great invest, I've had many people talk to me about it as far as investment goes, and my grandfather bought that house in 1975, generations of my family, including myself and my brothers have lived in that house, the last thing I want to do is lose that place, I just wasn't in the town, I wasn't dealing with it directly, so it wasn't at the forefront of my mind.
Well, as Councilman Bothroyd has identified, that's what the council would like to see happen too.
Yeah.
So this is just a step in the process.
Yes.
And there, there's two elements in the process that are important, one is the communication that I've talked about, the other one is continued improvement, there needs to be continued improvement, not, not a little bit of improvement over 12 months, but there needs to be continued improvement.
And I understand, to me, it seemed like there was a lot of improvement because the level of just stuff and trash that I got out of the yard and out of the house and the progress I'd started making, but I definitely get that other side of that as well.
All right, thank you for your comments.
I have a question.
Oh.
How much progress do you think is realistic in the next 30 days?
I could get the foundation work done, that, that would be doable, because it's a patch job on the side, according to James from Long Hair.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we hope that you're successful and that you come back as a citizen of Guthrie at some point. Okay, Noah?
That's it.
Okay.
All I've got, so.
Yes.
As Councilman Bothroyd had indicated, from this meeting, we give usually about 30 to 45 days for anybody to come in to contact us, get with us, to get a kind of a plan or a game plan together in that, and as Mr. Bothroyd had indicated, if they continue to work with us, we will keep moving along. Anytime a building permit is issued, that's six months automatically, so once they get in and get a plan and get a building permit... So once they get in and get a plan and get a building permit issued, that gives them six months. If they show progress during that time, we can extend that to make sure it gets done. So tonight is not going to be the final, you know, it's approved. However, having said all that, like every year, we want, recommend that the council still adopt the resolution with all properties because it does give us a fallback that if one of the property owners does not follow through in time, then we do have the teeth, as they say, to go back and abate it through the legal process. So with that, thank you.
Okay. Any questions of staff?
I do, I, I do have a question for Dan. Just kind of big picture. You know, we're, we're doing 10 this year. It seems like we usually do about 10 a year. Do you feel like we're catching up? Do you feel like we're staying on top of things? Like where do you feel like we're at as a community, as a whole?
Yeah, we're at a good point. I mean, honestly, you know, a, a lot of the reason it's 10 is funding, you know? It's like all of our departments. We only have a certain amount of money. Because we have to look at it as if all 10 of them, we're going to have to, you know, abate our, our, you know, the city and then put the liens on the property and that. Obviously, anytime that we get cooperation to either get them fixed up or they tear them down themselves, that gives us a little bit more funding, usually to go back on some in that. But in general, yes, we're, we're making progress. Because if you've noticed, a lot of them that come, are coming even this year, are not nearly as bad as they were two, three, four years ago. And it is kind of to where we can kind of, if you want to say, maybe put the fire under some of the property owners, say, it's probably salvageable, but we need to do something. Because, you know, when it's boarded up and that, it's not good. So we have seen, again, getting to a much better point of where, yeah, there's definitely noticeable positive change.
Well, and even when I was driving around and looking at these properties, I noticed properties that, that have been through this process before, and there's a beautiful home sitting on it. So that's encouraging to see that.
It is. Yes. You're correct. A lot of them that have been actually torn down have gotten sold and somebody has built a new home on them. So a lot of those don't just sit vacant. They do turn around to get built on.
Thank you, Dan.
Thanks.
Very good. And Noah, thank you for that presentation and appreciate the efforts that you do on behalf of the city, as well as on behalf of the citizens of the city. Really appreciate that, your efforts. I now close the public hearing and move to item number six, which is the resolution declaring these 10 structures as dilapidated or dangerous. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions from the council? Submit your votes, please.
I'll vote three.
See the votes. Unanimous approval from all those present then to approve resolution number 2925-02 for declaring these 10 structures as dilapidated and dangerous. Item number seven is mayor's nomination to the Guthrie Board of Adjustment. There are two nominations, one for Dan Newton and one for Daryl Barnett, Burnett, for the three-year term expiring in May 31st of 2028.
So moved.
Second.
Any, anybody have any questions of Dan before he sits down?
Nope.
So submit your votes, please.
I'll vote three.
Let's see the votes. Unanimous approval from all those present then to approve the two nominations of Dan Newton and Daryl Burnett to the Guthrie Board of Adjustments, terms expiring in May 31st of 2028. Item number eight, rescind the city council action of October 15th, 2025, declaring fuel tanks at the Guthrie Evan Regional Airport.
I'll take this, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Eddie, go ahead.
Yes, Mayor and Council. In October, the airport board and the city council unanimously approved relocating both of the fuel tanks out at the airport. Given the progress we've made in terms of the lease agreement and the fueling tank agreement with that tenant, at that time, we decided to delay on moving forward, even though the quote had been approved. We did not issue a notice to proceed, nor did we authorize any payment to the contractor. So at this point, we were further down the road. It's been more than 90 days. We sought additional bids to remove and relocate these tanks. So the first action tonight is to rescind that first approval. And then your second item is to award the bid to Boomer Environmental in an amount of
So moved.
Second.
You know, we're, we're just voting on the rescension.
On eight.
Voting on the rescension at this time.
Exactly.
And that's what your motion is?
Yes.
And that's what your second was?
Yes.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Looks like we're going to save a little bit of money, too, if I'm reading.
Submit your votes.
I'll vote three.
See the votes. Unanimous approval then to move forward with the rescension of the October 15th, 2024 relocation of fuel tanks. Item number nine, which is the relocation of fuel tanks with a new bid and as previously identified, at a better price.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second.
I, I have a question.
We have, yes.
Go ahead.
I just want to point out what you said during the airport board meeting was that bid was never actually let. We didn't accept the $24,000.
That's correct. Yes. So we solicited those bids. We brought those to both the airport board and the city council. And once that was approved by the council, then staff was directed to move forward as needed. So if you'll remember, we were having conversations with the tenant about the condition of the hanger and the tanks in tandem. When we didn't, when we weren't able to move forward with that conversation, then we had to take a different direction. And that's how we got here, so.
We didn't break a contract or anything.
Thank you for that clarification.
Correct.
Because the, while, while the council had approved the action, the action had never moved forward with actually awarding the bid.
Yes.
Yes?
So will you explain why we're waiving the purchasing policy on this?
Yes, that's a great point. Thank you. In this funding tier, we are required to have three quotes, up to $25,000. At this point, because of the nature of the work and the location, we've struggled to get contractors so we could compare bids apples and apples. It was really more of a fruit comparison. So the, the next contractor we could find was out of Kansas and the conversation just wasn't headed in the direction that we needed it to go. So in those scenarios, we typically request the contractor to send us what's called a no bid. And that counts as your third bid. At this time, though, I think it's, it's cleaner to let the council see that we've got a cheaper bid than what we had originally. We got two bids. We tried to get three and, and this scenario, we just couldn't.
If I could add one thing to that, in this price point, it's the city policy, it's not stay low. So we're waiving the city's own purchasing policy.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Okay. Any other?
The tanks going to stay in the same location or are they moving to different?
We're, we're relocating the tanks.
Relocating. Okay.
All right.
Is that it?
Yes. Would you restate your motion?
Motion to approve.
Item number?
Nine.
Nine.
I'll second that. Item number nine.
I just wanted to make sure we were clear and we're on to nine, not eight.
Yep.
Okay. Any other further discussion? Submit your votes, please.
I'll vote three.
See the votes. Unanimous approval then to move forward with the relocation of fuel tanks with the Boomer Environment, not to exceed $17,966.32. Item number 10, a city manager report, and you?
Very brief.
You've been very busy with lots of other things this.
Lot of things going on, Mayor and Council. The one thing I do want to say, last couple of weeks have been extremely taxing on the team, not just our first responders, but all of our employees as a whole. Outside of city employees, Logan County, volunteer fire departments, Oklahoma Forestry Services, I'm sure I'm going to miss somebody, so try not to list them all. We have had all hands on deck since the first of last week. It's no secret that most of Logan County has been on fire at some point over the last week. And I just want to say thank you to our first responders who have been working literally around the clock for the last week. As a council, council and staff, those, those employees go out there and they fight those fires and they answer the call regardless of the conditions. And Friday, we had 80 mile per hour winds. The dust was so thick you couldn't see through it. Conditions were not favorable. That's, our team goes out there and answers the call nonetheless. So we've had a lot of support and I appreciate that because we couldn't have done it alone. It takes all of us. So with that, Mayor, that's all I have for you.
Thank you very much. Item number 11, which are comments from city council. Councilman Rob.
Just ditto to Eddie. Thank you to all city staff, every single department. You realize that it encompasses everybody, not just the fire department. It's all the departments, it's all the staff. So thank you very much. We have the Renaissance Festival going on this weekend, so everybody come out to that, Aaron. And I just chose somebody I saw. So, yeah, come out to that. That's always a big deal for the town. They're trying to divert a lot of the attendees into downtown and incentivizing. So it should be fun. Other than that, that is all I have. Thank you.
Councilwoman Mills?
Yeah, I just want to thank all of our first responders and staff and everyone involved in responding to the fires. I know that's a massive undertaking and so I appreciate all the work that they've done in trying to minimize the impacts of those. My family has been through a couple of house fires and so I know how traumatic and difficult that can be for someone facing that kind of loss. So my heart goes out to the people who have lost tremendous amount through these fires. So I'm grateful for those who have worked hard to minimize the loss over the last week or so. That's all.
Councilman Bothrow?
I mean, that's, I ditto exactly what everybody's saying and I want to switch just a little bit with Dan and Noah and give them some kudos. The whole housing, dilapidated housing structure thing is a stressful deal for everybody involved. I guarantee it. And you guys handle it top notch, so just want to let you know that.
Councilman Williams?
Thoughts and prayers for everybody that's lost properties. I'm out in that area every day and it's, if you lay your eyes on it, you don't really understand the scope. But also thanks to the people who brought out supplies and volunteers and the churches that were involved and, and, and the facilities that were involved in giving people a place to come. And just can't say enough for the volunteers and the people at Guthrie that joined in and did their part to help their fellow citizens in a time of need. So appreciate all of that.
Councilman Taylor?
Thank you, staff. I know all of you guys have been putting in overtime. Eddie and I, we talked about that last week. So, yeah, 80 mile per hour winds, it's not good. Homes are going down and I think we've had four people die statewide. That's not good at all. But we really appreciate what you guys have done, all of you, fire police, staff inside here, all the guys inside and outside, so. And I'll, 89 hours is coming up, so get ready for that. Hopefully, we'll have everything kind of calm down, kind of green up, and we can maybe get something moving forward. So, thank you.
Buy, buy your buttons and, and your tickets to the wagon feast right, right here.
Well, I thought that was the money you owe me in that way.
Just happen to have some, just happen to have some right here, Councilman Bothrow. I, I will join with everybody else. You know, a, a tragic time for us with the, with the weather that we had no control over. But, you know, it's, it's what I call Guthrie good. It's, it's all of the departments working together, the, starting with the dispatchers, the fire police, all of the departments, as Councilman Roth has, has identified. And churches, places, churches opening up themselves so that they have evacuation points. Citizens of Guthrie donating money, donating food, donating clothing, donating transportation. I mean, just again, it's Guthrie good. And it makes you feel really, really proud. And it's kind of what you call turning lemons into lemonade. And again, we, we would certainly hope that it never happened, never happens again. But Guthrie good is, is a positive out of it. So really appreciate that. I had the great honor of representing our, our community and the investiture of the 17th, I think, yep, 17th president of Langston University, Dr. Ruth Ray Jackson. She's actually been on the job for about a year. The academic process causes this ceremony to happen about a year after they actually start the job. But she, Langston University is, is a partner with us and we want to continue to build that partnership. And she has expressed a desire to continue to make that happen. So a great opportunity for us and I think another, a great leader in our region, Dr. Ruth Ray Jackson. With that, we are adjourned from our city council meeting and I open our Public Works Authority meeting of March 18th. Second item on the agenda is the consent agendas, which is the approval of the Public Works Authority meeting of March 4th. The other items B through G are the confirmation of things that we have approved as the city council in this meeting just beforehand. And so I would, I would entertain a motion to accept all of those and to approve the consent agenda as listed and presented.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion about any of these items? Submit your votes.
I'll vote three.
See the votes. Unanimous approval from all those present then to approve consent agenda items A through G. Item removed from the consent agenda, there were none. Item number?
Four.
Four. Oh, there it is, over here on this piece of paper. Excuse me. Item number four, award bid for a roof replacement project for 316 West Harrison. Eddie, are you taking that also?
Yes, Mayor and Council. This item covers a roof for the building we know as a Waste Connections building over on Harrison. We have obtained three quotes to replace the roof on that structure, one from Red River